To the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting for August 17, 2023. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. And also want to mention, just, you know, have everybody keep up in thoughts and prayers, the people in Hawaii this time. We'll start off with Hudson Valley Animal Rescue. Come on up.
Hello. Amy Bonmeri for Hudson Valley Animal Rescue. On July 5th, the town board changed the zoning for the R-20 zoning district, which brought a number of the uses that are currently existing on the Hudson Valley Animal Rescue property into compliance. So, the, there's a couple of issues with COs on the buildings. We are working with the building department on that. We have to put together floor plans to show egress points, things like that. There's issues with noise, our soundproofing of a few buildings, and that's part of the building department process as well. So that will affect which variances we require from the zoning board appeals. We are scheduled to be on the November, or September 11th ZBA agenda.
Okay.
And all modifications to the buildings are internal, with the exception of connecting the water line, which is a very small disturbance.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Eric, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, the board has this application in front of it for a lead seeker and for a site plan special use permit. As Amy said, the town board approved a number of zoning amendments, sort of a change that would allow animal rescue uses and a variety of related accessory uses for this area. This is kind of the first time the application has appeared before the board with those amendments. We think it's probably going to work out. The recommendation is that the various uses, they've changed on the plan over time. They don't entirely line up with the application. So we're suggesting that the applicant go through those uses and identify them in accordance with the amended code, so that the board can approve, can consider the approval of the plan and evaluate the special use permit conditions as they apply to those amended uses approved by the town board.
Okay.
So with that, I think it's in good shape to move forward, but I'd be happy to sit down with you and work through those uses. It's a little complicated with the accessory uses and the special use permit uses.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say maybe sit down with staff offline after this meeting and you'll get your ZBA review. And the next time you're back, we should be able to move forward then.
Okay.
For the board discussion, you know, please discuss whatever the item's on the plan. One item is if the applicant's gonna turn around and come back fairly quickly, the board will have to do a seeker review. And the applicant, at this point, the applicant has a letter from OPR that's older, and the board may wanna, can accept the minor changes as minor and not relevant, or it can seek an updated analysis by the applicant.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. Go to engineering, Bobby.
Most of our comments have been addressed. There was just a little bit on the asphalt removal and restoration with some of the side street parking that we're trying to eliminate. But we're pretty happy with the application.
Okay, so.
Minor comments left.
Sounds like you're mostly, mostly ready then. Sound for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, it called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. For those online, we have a seven member full board tonight. Anyone wish to speak on this application in the room or on Zoom call? If you're on Zoom, please just unmute yourself or jump up and down and we'll do it for you. Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, it called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Peter?
I think that you've made good progress here. I think you should respond to the comments from the zoning administrator, respond to the comments from the county health department regarding the septic system. I would be in favor of accepting the 2019 letter regarding the store property. You know, I think it's timely and I don't really think much has changed in
Yeah, nothing.
in four years, so I think that would be okay. And I think that your client is providing a very, you know, a sorely needed service for our community and really glad to help move it forward.
Thanks, Peter. Ben?
I agree with Peter. This is a good project. Really needed in the town to do the work that they're doing. I don't see many problems that's handled.
All right. Let's go to Matt.
I think the only thing I agree that we accept the 2019.
Yep. Is that the date on it? Or was it, I thought I saw 2021. So it's 2019, Eric is the latest. He wrote here that it's 2022. Thought it was newer even.
I think I got it last year, sorry, at the beginning of this year.
So 2022 it is, actually. So it's not even that old. There was a previous one older. So I think we're good with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I feel the same way and I think the letter is sufficient.
Rocco?
Yeah, I like this project. I think it's, as said, the other board members, as I've said, I think it adds a lot here to the town. And I agree with accepting another letter, but I need one clarification. Was there a need for any septic improvements? There was, that was an open question. Did you meet with the board of health, everything was fine there?
I haven't met with them yet. I'm gonna run the numbers and see if we need to make improvements. The uses, while they changed in theory, I don't think that anything is going to increase the flow to the septic system.
Okay, well, I know, I know Eric has this in here, so I'm sure we'll check on that.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, it'd be good to do that before the next submission, just so we put that to rest. Yep, that's an important, important thing. Nicole?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything to add. I just, last time I had mentioned the chickens and the parking, but I think we're squaring that away, so I don't think I have any questions.
Okay.
Yep, I think everything's been covered and no need for that updated OPRHP letter. So just get with staff offline and, you know, iron out the last few
Okay.
details and get your ZBA approval and move on from there.
Okay.
Okay. Move the planning board determine the application is incomplete for seeker review and defer further action on this application subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included up and not limited to the following one to meet.
Second. Moved in seconded, called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Amy. Next up is 68 Van Wagner Road. Who's here representing that, online or in the room? I think. Coming down.
Good afternoon, Robert Turner Kinkelman Architects.
What updates have happened here?
Okay. We've taken consideration of a lot of the comments and we responded to them with this current application. We were looking at, we've made additional changes as per the concerns of the planning board regarding the odors. So we added the note in there, it was in complaints, that they would upgrade to the alternate filtration system, so that way, that would eliminate the odors. I know in speaking with the manufacturer of the facility, they did advise me that the only time that odors are really released into the air is during the painting cycle, which is fairly minimal, where the drying cycle is a longer period. And a lot of that has to do with, when it goes into the drying cycle, a damper closes and 80% of the air gets recirculated. And so odors, you know, diminish significantly, you know, once it gets into the drying cycle.
Okay.
The other issue is that they really aren't gonna be doing a whole lot of painting, you know, when they're detailing a lot of cars. If they have a car come in, maybe once or twice a week, you know, could be what they're doing for painting. So the odor is pretty much gonna be a minimal issue regarding that. One of Eric's comments about trying to do something to make the entrances more visible, you know, there's no issue about adding some reflectors, you know, on each side of the entrances, so that way at nighttime, you know, people can see where you exit in and out. There was a comment regarding the parking spaces that are over near the dumpster area. Because they have walls or a fence alongside of them, they need to be the wider spaces rather than nine feet, they should be 10. We'll be able to accommodate that, making a slight adjustment to the site plan. I also did have communications with James Teed, with the health department, and verified that the oil-water separator is not something that needs to be reviewed by their office. It's outside of their jurisdiction. I know there was also a concern regarding being able to keep the flow level below five gallons per minute. So what our civil engineer is allocated to do is to add a water meter prior to the ball valve, if I'm doing this correctly. So that way, the ball valve can be adjusted to make sure that the flow does not exceed. You know, you'll be able to read it on the meter and you'll know exactly what the flow is. So if it gets too high, then you, you know, adjust the ball valve to accommodate that. In regards to the cleanouts, what is being proposed is that the sampling manhole will serve as one cleanout. That's gonna be before the Y. And then, of course, we will add the two cleanouts on the outside of the building as requested. And again, as per the building department, the spray booth will comply with chapter 416 of the 2020 New York State Building Code and chapter 24 of the 2000 New York State Fire Code.
All right.
As we've stated and done a lot of work to comply with the concerns of the planning board and the public, we moved all chemicals that would be flammable, noxious, dangerous. They are now all gonna be located in the paint booth building. We did add that note regarding no work to be done within the building that will create any sparks, flames of any type, so that way it's just gonna be restricted to the detailing, dent removal, vacuuming, waxing, cleaning, you know, non-hazardous, you know, types of work to be done. And I know within my response letter, I did address the criteria and performance standards for the special use permit, to the best of my knowledge. And I expanded the responses as necessary within the special use permit as well. So that way, hopefully it provided more detail in regards to the uses and the things going on here on the site. And that would pretty much be it.
All right, thanks for the update. Eric?
Sure. Let's see, this has been in front of the board a couple of times.
Yep.
We're hoping it's moving towards a endpoint. The, there's a lot of changes on the plans with this round. And we've provided the board, the board has had a lot of discussions about the materials and the activities here. So we've provided a, two, two possible pathways for the board. One is with approval resolutions. And there is a separate special use permit resolution included that you have, which identifies and details the various uses and how they're gonna be conducted, and the materials that would be used and where they're located on the site as one option, along with a seeker resolution and a negative declaration. There's also, if you're not comfortable with it, then we're recommending that before it identified remaining concerns, and there's a resolution for deferral. The, if the board decides to proceed with an approval resolution, then there's, I'm gonna recommend that the staff, as provided, the staff recommendation just had a single line resolution. It didn't refer to, a single line recommendation to act. And so we're just, we provided you with, just revised language to refer to the separate special use permit resolution and to incorporate that by reference. Minor modification here. That's, I think pretty much it. If you proceed with a conditioned approval, then we're also recommending that you conduct architectural review. There's elevations provided, various changes to the tap-to-tap advantage.
All right, thanks, Eric. Go to engineering.
Most of our comments were addressed. I think we had one question about the oil-water separator and that pumping rate, which Bob kinda spoke to with adding a meter. That seems like that might address that issue. So that was, that was pretty much our, and then the health department, which I saw some correspondence from Jim Teed. So there's a couple, one other minor thing on, on the striping, but other than that, we're pretty comfortable.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Lisa, for working with Eric and creating that resolution. Is there any comments you have on it this time?
No, I mean, I think based on the snip that Eric put in the NAG deck, which talks about the conditions that the applicant has put on the plans in terms of what can be done in each building, and those are incorporated also into the special use permit by reference and also spelled out, belt and suspenders. I think we're, from a legal standpoint, I'm comfortable. And I think from a planning standpoint, Eric's comfortable.
Okay, thanks. It's clarified a lot in that resolution.
Robert, I, one technicality you contacted me to get out this afternoon and indicated that the paint building is or is not going to have a proposed water connection. I think either way, there was no substantial change to the plans required, but it sounds like you identified a potential discrepancy. And I just wanted to have that clear for the, for the record. And the negative declaration makes a reference to it, so I wanna correct that on the record if it's needed.
Correct, as it's needed. And then we would be doing a review with the town engineer as well as getting approval with the water and sewer district.
So the proposal is to, is to clean it out or to replace?
Oh, oh, I thought you meant water, water service to the paint booth building. But yes, there was a change, or there will need to be a change in regards to the clean, sorry, the floor drain that's within the existing building. When I received the drawings from our civil engineer, of course, at the last minute, I saw that he was replacing the floor drain. And so rather than, as note number seven says, that the floor drain is to be cleaned as part of the installation of the oil-water separator, it's actually gonna be removed and they're gonna be putting a new floor drain in. Just because when they did a site visit, they did not like the condition of the floor drain and they felt it best to, to put a new one in.
All right. Thank you. This is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. Anyone in the room or wish to comment on this project?
Bob, if you wouldn't mind stepping down and sitting in the first row? Thank you.
And we'll take some online comments after the room here.
Yep, go ahead.
Mics are on.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board for their time and consideration in listening to my comments and also my written comments on this project and all those that come in front of you that are within the Arlington Fire District. My name is George Finn. I'm battalion chief, a fire prevention officer for the Arlington Fire District. And part of my responsibilities is to review the projects that come across from the planning board to review and provide commentary and then finally sign off on the projects when they're done. This board has, of course, the responsibility at the end of this procedure to, to vote on a special use permit to allow this business to operate. So a brief digression in my experience. Again, 27 years in the fire department. I'm a nationally certified fire officer, fire investigator, and a code enforcement official. And I say that because I'm gonna give you an opinion. And this board, I would hope, would weigh an opinion from the department and myself on, on this particular project. I wrote, I appeared in front of this board, I believe it was back in 2001, at the very beginning of this project, discussed the project with the applicants, and my position has been steadfast and resolute at every turn. And I'll read my, my one written opinion that has reoccurred in the last four letters that I wrote to this board. And it says, "To the opinion of the Arlington Fire District that the planning board not approve a special use permit to allow a motor vehicle repair facility to occupy the first floor of a structure with residential occupants on the second floor. It is inherently dangerous to allow the occupants to live above a wood-framed, non-sprinkler motor vehicle repair facility." Now, in layman's terms, what that means is this is a wood structure. It's unprotected. It doesn't have any fire-rated facilities built into it. It doesn't have any sprinklers. This structure was made prior to the, the building codes. These codes are applicable when the structure was built. So it's, would not be, it wouldn't be conforming in today's codes. Okay? So, again, it's, it's somewhat of an opinion-based. It is my opinion. And then the board has to, at some point, vote with their conscience and also consider the legalities behind it. But in closing, I would hope that you would consider the opinion of the fire department and for the occupants that are gonna be in this structure. Thank you.
All right, thanks, George. Anyone else in the room wish to comment on this project? Seeing none, we got one coming down.
And Felicia, we do see your hand is raised. We will get to the Zoom in a moment.
Hi, my name is Stephen Horr. I'm a car dealer, wheels are us. I'm kinda jumping in, Eddie, the owner of the aforementioned house.
Okay.
He's looking for the paint booth. Asked me if I'd come and just say a few words on his behalf.
It's fine.
And just that, you know, in the business, it's needed. There is no more body shops hardly around. And it'll just be another derelict building if you don't give him this. And it's one of many in the town of Poughkeepsie, and I'm a car dealer. And it's nearly impossible, like I said, to find people who are willing to work and that we can find places to get our cars repaired or fixed, you know? While I understand what the, the fire inspector said is very important, I also feel like, you know, we just don't need any more empty buildings and we're looking for people to do this work. There's just nobody left. It'll just be another empty building in the town of Poughkeepsie. You know, that's hard to say. I mean, personally, there are good people that work hard. I don't know if they even can come up and say themselves what, what they wanna say, but just on their behalf, you know? They just asked me to say, since I wanted to say that. That's it. Thanks.
All right, appreciate your comments. Thanks. Anyone else in the room? Let's go to Zoom call. I see Felicia's hand is raised.
Hi, everybody. How are you? I don't really have a whole lot to say, except that I'm just worried that once it gets passed, it'll just become an enforcement issue as to what's actually going on there. It's just my opinion, because I read some of the new parts of the application and stuff, and I believe it said something about one bay. And they typically have like three cars in there at a time. And, you know, I would think that, you know, having curtains up in a window, you're trying to hide something, in my opinion. Most places that I bring my car to are big, open windows, and you can see what's going on very easily. And then my other concern is, did it say that they already put some kind of bushes around the fenced area? Or is that happening later? Or are they gonna just let the grass grow to cover the fence, 'cause it's quite high there? They did mow today, but really only a strip on Van Wagner Road and like the fire hydrant and the grass by the fence is also very high. And then my other concern is the cars, you know, 90 days. It seems like there's still quite a few cars in there. And I was looking on the plans a little bit. It looks like they have some kind of a pathway where a car comes in and then a car goes out. But sometimes there's like 10 cars parked in front of there during the day. I don't know if that's gonna change with new parking stuff. I'm not saying that they don't work hard, because they are always working. There's people, you know, washing cars in the parking lot and, you know, I'm sure they're very hardworking. I'm just, I'm just concerned about, you know, they must be painting still in there at this point. I would think they're not stopping the painting. I'm just worried about residents, really, is really all my concerns. Not really next to my house. I do pass it every day, but it really doesn't affect me so much. I'm just worried about those constituents that live around it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Felicia. Anyone else online or in the room that's? Have we got someone else in the room here? I mean, from what I understand, it's mainly supposed to be a car detailing business and any kind of painting will happen in the, in the booth, but I can understand enforcement concerns.
Hi, my name is Victor MacGillan, 81 Van Wagner Road. I pass this store place for doing the work. They keep it clean, a front and the back is not like it used to be before when the other people had it. I understand the part there where they're worrying about people upstairs, but I understand they're also gonna build an extension on the side for, just for painting.
Yeah, separate booth.
And that's all done with filters and stuff, I understand. So I have no problem.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Yeah, it used to be a lot of go-kart, I mean, golf carts around there. All right, anyone else in the room or online? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. All right, we're gonna go around the board for, for comments on this. Start with Peter.
A concern I have, I think I've expressed it before, is with the paint booth. The applicant is requesting that, contrary to what the speaker just said, that they'll be operated with filters. Unless I'm mistaken, the applicant is requesting that the filters are not being required at this point? It would only be installed after we received a complaint?
Oh, no, there's a standard filter that this, that the paint booth usually comes with. And that cuts out a significant, they state about 98% of the particles are filtered out through the regular filter. If there is an odor issue, they have a different type of filter you can bump up to, which helps cut additional odors out. So, but there is a filtration system.
See, we're, we're in a position here of approving a cruise liner that doesn't come equipped with lifeboats. And you're basically telling us that if, in case the cruise ship starts leaking, that you'll provide the lifeboats. And as one of the callers mentioned earlier, this potentially could become a, a big enforcement problem, a big headache for the town. I'm, that's a real concern that I have. Really, honestly, I'm not that concerned. I mean, I have concern about the detailing, but I'm looking at the plan here. I mean, I look at the plan, you've got the exhaust I mean, I look at the plan. You've got the exhaust duct. It looks like it's about four and a half feet over the roof line, and there's a considerable difference in elevation between where that paint booth is located and the residential properties to the west on Van Wagner Road. So that if there is an issue with odor, if the wind is blowing, it's going to blow, potentially could blow, you have four choices. You've got north, east, west, and south. But you have to figure that if it's just, there's a 25% chance, is a good chance, that the wind will be blowing in that direction. So, my concern would be, would be to approve the paint booth without the enhanced filters and without a higher exhaust duct to mitigate the possibility of those fumes floating into the neighborhood behind it, and actually all around it. I mean, you have to remember that this property is surrounded by residential properties. You have the south, you have multifamily, and on the north, east, and west sides, they're all single-family residential properties. So, we have a responsibility. I mean, we actually talk a lot here about water quality and soil quality. We really have occasion to talk about air quality, because we just don't have a lot of industrial uses here in the town. But I see that as a, as a real concern. I'm glad to see that you provided the RVVITI on Van Wagner Road. I think that would be a big enhancement to that parking area. But other than that, I really, I have strong reservations about. I don't want to have this become an enforcement issue where the neighbors have to come to us and complain, you know, "Why did you do this?" I mean, they're going to be going to the building department. They're going to be going to the zoning department. They're going to call the town board. I just don't want to see that happen.
Sorry. Sorry. Are you recommending that extra filter be added up front? Is that what you're...
Extra filters and an enhanced exhaust system, the height of the duct. And before, not after.
Okay, that's... All right. We go to Ben.
Yes. I wholeheartedly agree with Peter on what he said about the paint building. And this building is listed as a detail shop. I'm going to be adding a paint building. He wants to add a paint building, which goes from a detail shop to an auto body repair, body repair shop. Big difference. Although you say there's going to be minimal painting being done in the paint building, why go to that big expensive? You're only going to do a little bit of paint. Doesn't seem to make sense. And the exhaust is a big, big concern of mine with the neighbors, if it's not with the latest technology. Also, the heating oil tanks, I think we brought up last time? Outdoor above ground heating oil tanks contained with more than the capacity of the tanks, so it can't be any overflow?
Correct. That's what's being recommended.
Will there be any monitor on these tanks?
There didn't seem to, when I was reading the information, they didn't require that there be a monitor on them, because the tanks themselves are only 275 gallons, and the secondary containment is well over 300 gallons. Whatever leaks will go into those containment, and you can visually see it.
As visual?
Correct.
And when nobody's there and there's a leak, nobody's going to see it?
But it will go into the containment tanks, and that's where they will stay.
I agree. And then it's more easily flammable when it's outside the tank in a containment area. So, that's a concern. But my big concern is going from a detail shop to a paint shop that's not, not going to have all the bright bells and whistles, I don't feel.
All right. Thanks, Ben. I mean, can you state again, you know, that that seems to be one of our biggest concerns, the detailing? First, I mean, people are taught, you know, George talks about auto body repair, so can you classify what type of repair you'd be doing?
The only repair that they do is dent removal, which if somebody comes in with a small dent in the car, they'll pop it out. I mean, that's about all that they can do.
So, they're not doing engine repair?
No, they're not doing any type of dent and engine repair. They're not changing oil. They're not changing transmissions or belts or anything. Or if somebody comes in with a significantly damaged car, that's not something they deal with.
Okay.
They deal with very minor dents. They, then when they take that dent out, they do have to repaint the area, because it might get scratched, you know? There are things that you end up by having to do in order to get that dent out. So, those are the things that they're looking to do. And then, of course, the detailing, which is, you know, the washing, the shampooing, the waxing, the, all the stuff that goes along with cleaning a car, bringing it up to like, has showroom condition, so that way it's, you know, looks really nice.
I'd just like to add, with all respect, one of my uncles had a body shop. I used to go help him out. And I can tell you that something that I learned at an early age is that you look at a dent in a car, most people don't realize that metal stretches. So, you would think that you could just take a rubber hammer and bang it against that dent, and it'll come out. It won't. It requires, unless the technology has changed significantly, it requires the use of an air tool that generates a lot of sparks. And also, something we haven't discussed is the noise involved in bodywork. Air tools are very, very loud. I'm figuring that the doors will be closed, but they won't be soundproof. And because of the proximity of all those residential properties around you, I'm also a little concerned about the noise being created by those air tools.
And also, probably be some grinding if they have to fill in, things, smooth it out, grind it. That could cause sparks. That's another thing that's dangerous. This is a good business. I don't know if this is the right location for it.
If that, if that kind of work is done inside the paint booth versus the house, that's a concern.
I mean, from what I have been told from the client, there is going to be no compressor within the existing building, so that means there will be no air tools being used. The tools that they have consist of the vacuums, the buffers, the, there are some electrical hand tools, you know, if they have to undo screws or things of that nature. But I know, when I've been there at the facility, you know, I saw no compression tools, no air tools, nothing along those lines. I did not see any grinders or anything. So, I did not, I would say that that work does not get done at this facility.
That's for detailing, not for body repair. Completely different.
Because he doesn't do body repair. He does detailing.
Detailing requires painting?
It can require painting.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for clarifying again, Nicole.
I don't have anything to say.
As I echo what Peter and Ben have said, I find that also to emphasize the point of why go to an expense, to put in a fairly expensive paint booth unless you've done a cost-revenue analysis on that. You need to pay it off. And even if you do take out the dents, where would that work be done? You're saying it won't be done inside? It can't be done in the paint booth. The paint booth seems as kind of small. It can just handle, from what I saw, unless I'm wrong. Is that, would that paint booth allow a tow vehicle to be brought into it?
The paint booth is sized to accommodate an entire car, plus then you have space around the vehicle to be able to, of course, paint. And so, that would give enough space if you're doing any grinding work, if that's what you end up by having to do. There is space to be able to work around the car and do that.
Well, then, then there's the other issue where, because that's where you're going to store all the flammable's, is in that belt, and so why would you want to do grind in where you have your flam, your flammable's and to create sparks? Okay, I'm getting a little confused here, because you're saying detailing, that the other guy was saying bodywork. Which one is it? And it's tough to get into an enforcement issue. It's just too, it's just too enticing to not have, not to do the bodywork in a sheltered area.
As I had stated it, to my knowledge, there's a certain level of work that they do. I did not see any grinders. So, I cannot, you know, state that that is something that they will do. It could be recommended that it is done within the paint booth building, because as I said, there is room. The paint itself is not within the space that the car exists, where they would be doing the work. It's in what's called a paint room, which is adjacent to it. That also has to get locked up and placed into a fireproof cabinet, so that way it is locked up and it is closed in a way. The only time it comes out is when they're actually doing the painting.
But there's still the danger, I mean, the paint booth is still in proximity of the building, where the residents are.
It's within the...
So, if something happens in the paint booth and there is an explosion, it could affect, and most likely will affect the building with the residents. That's my concern. I mean, you know, I, I'm making the assumption, and from what everybody is saying, these people are hardworking, they have a wish to get into business, but it may not be the right place for that. And that's my concern, is really the residential and all that.
I definitely understand your concerns.
And it's usually after the fact.
I mean, we...
And that's my position.
Enforcement's always an issue for any project we have.
Right.
We have to look at the facts.
Right, but there's more danger here involved, and there's residential issues involved, there's people involved.
Yep. All right. That's my position.
My comments are that I am very sympathetic to the applicant, but I can't move past the comments of the fire department. So, it's not a project that I would vote for, unless there's a movement from the fire department.
All right. Ahmad?
It's very convoluted, because we've been discussing what are uses and drafting special permit, and we're still confused about what is really going to be done in that site. Painting, grinding, so clarity is not there, as also drafting something here. It's not clear to us. The comment from everyone that you heard is more or less the same, that the concern is the livelihood of the residents in the building where you're doing the work and the air quality that is affected, affecting everyone around you. So, and the fire department, like colleagues said here, comments are very strong. I mean, they really are less, it is limited to a detailing, like would be drafted here, no grinding, nothing. It just, you come and vacuum and wax, and that's all saying. I don't see this is happening in my opinion.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would the applicants like to come up and try and clarify some of these questions that some of us might have?
The clients are not here, so I cannot have them come up to do any clarification on that.
All right. That's fine.
If it's a detailing business, that's one thing, but, you know, adding this paint booth is what I think is a lot of board members' concerns, of how they're going to use that. If they're not doing engine repair and all that stuff, there's a lot, there's a lot less issues there. If it's mainly detailing, soap and water is not a big deal. But we've, you drafted a resolution with a lot of restrictions to keep it to that as much as possible. Any, any dangerous things to be in this secured paint booth, which has, I mean, what kind of fire protection does that paint booth have built into it, do you know?
I mean, I, I just know it complies with the various codes that are out there. As to how they do it, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a self-contained product, so... And as you said, you separate the paint from the car, but, all right. Guess we've all had our say at this point, so...
Mr. Chair, we close the public hearing. If the applicant wants to come back to clarify things at a future meeting, it may be, the board may want to reopen the public hearing and offer, if there is some, a revised plan that's put forward, offer the public a chance to comment on that. Otherwise, the board has 62 days from a closed public hearing in order to render a decision. So... I think we already closed it, didn't we?
I did, but I can reopen it. I just, yeah, it feels like we're...
Could they, could they just rescind the motion to close the public hearing, rather than go through opening a new one?
Right. It would not be a new public, we wouldn't need to notice and do all that sort of stuff. That's right. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying for the record, if you want to keep the public hearing open, if the applicant's going to come back with more information.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're getting a feeling from the board, we want to, we're not happy with the paint booths. We would like to understand from the applicant directly what, what type of work he's doing, I think. So, maybe we want to move to defer. So, at this point, I move that we rescind the closing of the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And at this point, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2020. 15th, is it?
Do I have the wrong date? It says 7th. It says 15th.
Oh, I think that's wrong.
Oh, okay. What is it?
I guess the 21st.
September 21st, 2023.
My anniversary.
I'll have to check.
I won't be here.
Move to the second. Call to question.
Now, I would just say one thing, and that is, you know, I, there's, I think, some considerable concern about the paint booth. If the applicant wanted to consider, you know, an alternative to that structure, a structural part of his business, my sense is that there isn't a lot of support. So, if he determines that he wants to come back, I think you should probably keep that in mind.
Okay. Before I adjourn the hearing, there is, I reopened it. I see that somebody wishes to speak.
Yes. I didn't know you were there. Yeah, you came in.
Yeah.
My name is Edgar Sanchez. I'm actually the one that's working there at the shop.
Okay.
I hear, you know, most of the comments and all the downsides of opening, you know, spending this business. As a first, first thing, we decided to buy that property for a future investment for me, my kids, and my nephews. I'm working only with my nephew. You know, regarding of how it has to be done, you know, the money-wise, I mean, it's financing, it's available for anything that we have to buy nowadays. As far as the professional I am doing this work, I've been doing it for 20 years. I work on the high-end body shops, detailing shop, repair shop. I decided to open my own, you know? Salary wasn't there. What I was making, working at Georgia Body, North Side Body, all these old bodies that I worked, I worked for Jocuse. I have good references of my work, the quality work, good name, reputation. I'm not here to try and open a, you know, five-bay body shop, 20-bays, like everybody else. They want to have something for me, my family, and try and make it, you know, as you guys require. You guys, you know, need top-of-the-line paint booth? We'll get it. We just got to finance it, and we'll get it. Fix the building the way you guys want it. We'll fix the building. But without getting an okay, we can't fix anything right now. The place has, you know, permitted for being a repair shop before, for dealership before, for inspection shop before. I've talked to the neighbors today, and a couple of the neighbors come there for the cars being cleaned, especially the guy that I've been living across the street for 20 years or more. years or more, Mr. Steven Brown. He's happy that it's not the shop that it used to be where the traffic was hold up for 30 minutes to unload golf cars. He happy that I keep it clean, that I organize everything in there. At the end of the night, it's nothing in the front of the building. Most people thinks that I'm selling cars, I'm not selling cars. I clean them for max oil, drop them off, pick them up at the end of the day, next morning. I don't sell that car. So I'm just trying to do a little effort to move on with the future life for my family, that's it. I'm not trying to, you know, be rich. Because the rich people is counting and I'm not. And I thank you young guys for, you know, what you have said and, you know, all the discussions, but I think it's, you know, it's a good opportunity for someone young, I'm only 40 years old, trying to do something, you know? I'm not trying to, you know, come here and interrupt anybody's speed, especially my neighbors or the people that live above or anybody. But if there's any complaint, bring them up to me and I can always, you know, take care of my neighbors, because I have done it and, you know, I've been there.
Can you talk to the, you heard the concern here with the paint shop, with the painting and the odor and all that stuff?
The new paint booth is...
What you're going to do with painting, what is the painting you're doing?
The new paint booth is, the basic paint booth has one price, top-of-the-line paint booth is increasing by, you know, maybe 50,000. But if that's what we have to get, we'll get, you know? And as far as the painting goes, it's not going to be like, like I said, a bay where it's five cars, where you're painting 20 cars every day. It is one once in a while, do like mechanical work and see what it brings. And I'll be honest, I had an offer, I had an offer to buy Jokius Auto Body, because that was my first boss. But that I don't have the money for. You can always buy what you have. And that building has everything. But I want to start my own. Like if my budget and my credit allows me to buy top-of-the-line paint booth and pay my architect, pay for the paving company and the fencing company and where it was up to standards and clean, I'm willing to do that. My neighbor, the lady next door for the deli, she came by, she said, anything you need, let me know. I'm like, oh, thank you. She say, if you want to, you know, I can, you know, this trees that she has, a bunch of trees next to my property, want me to cut them down for you? I'm like, no, that don't bother me. But I know when I put the fence up, I'll get rid of it for her and I make a nice for everybody, you know? I don't have issues with anybody there. I have my residential around the corner from the creek road, the building, the new buildings next door. One of the cleanest houses you can drive by, because that's how I am, I'm, you know, very, very clean.
How much body work would you be doing in the building?
I'm thinking if it's one good, good job a week, that's about it. The rest we focus on math, we focus on the, you know, for the regular customers. I have some clients that come from my group, from the Freemasons of State of New York, migrant organization, I'm far away, they kind of drop over the car, they're more to them older, bring their car, want to touch it out, refresh it. I get a lot of business from them as well, you know? People from the Moos Lodge in Hyde Park, I'm no member, but we have millions in there. So it's only two people, there's me and my nephew, so it's not much you can handle either.
So, yeah, not a volume business from that perspective.
It's an investment for, you know, if it comes to where it gets bigger, I have options, but I have to save up and then, you know, move on to the next. Everybody starts somewhere, you know? If you don't start, then you never know what it takes.
I think it's not, I mean, I understand it's not volume, but it's, it's the safety issue, right? I mean, with the, I mean, I know you're not going to do anything under the building where the sprinklers needed, that will probably address the fire department concerns, but the booth that you're taking aside and making as a, is it going to comply with all the fire department?
Yeah, that's...
Concerns and be a safe...
Actually, the paint...
Approved by them?
Yeah, the paint booth, the paint booth was recommended, one of my bosses that I work for, Jack from Northside, he recommended me in that company, because that's the new paint booth that he got when he bought Northside Auto Body. He said, this is the guy you gotta use. So he gave me the number, named John, they call him and he'll give you the top-of-the-line paint booth. He's going to give you, back in the day, they had the downdraft, didn't have any of the new regulations, the new, and they were $40,000. The new ones, 200, 250,000. Big difference, you know? Everything, every requirement. If it's anything that they don't know, they'll probably come here to be up to code to what they need. But that we don't know, because they just bring it, they put, you know, knew about some north side maybe three years ago when I was helping him there. And the guys came in three weeks period, everything brand new. But, and there you fit 40 cars, it's a huge body shop, I mean, you know?
It's a big difference. Yeah, from what I understand, Ahmad, this, the paint booth is all fire-rated and self-contained that way.
I understand what you're saying. The comment about explosion that would affect the nearby building, the other building, if they're, so is the fire department in that case can say that this is compliance, that they, I mean, you can't guarantee anything alive, but at least the probability of something happening to be very, very low.
And the business that I've been, I'll be honest, I started at 60 in a Jokius Auto Body, then I left there, worked at Troy's Auto Body for a while, then I went to Northside. Business reopened, the new owner wanted me to work for him. The salary wasn't what I wanted. But I have never heard in this business of a body shop going wrong, especially when it's everything top-of-the-line and new. Before, when you go to a repair shop, what the building, the way it was, it was a repair shop where they have the golf cars. Now they have batteries charging all night, they have oil, and then they have, they have more chances of anybody coming by with a cigarette and blowing the place up. We don't do any of the auto body and auto detailing, that has nothing to do with any oil at all, you know? We, I'm certified for the freon. When it comes to the freon, we have the top-of-the-line machine, it's $12,000, we have it. I'm certified, so it's not like, it's going to be like anybody just can come in and use it. And how many times I use it, maybe 10 times a year? Every day, you know? You've been to mechanical shops, I mean, I'm not going to put, put in fingers, I mean, you drive by Arlington, that place, you know, have oil over the place, the place is not clean, the floor is not clean, that can ignite before the body shop where it's normal in the floor. You know, it's a big difference, you know?
Yeah, I think the risk of explosion is very low.
Oh, yeah?
And as far as the new cars, well, I mean, I'm going to be honest, it's going to be maybe a few years before all this technology comes and it's going to be totally different with the electrical cars. This is, you know, thinking ahead. But the way I take cars apart, so power tools, the Milwaukee, it takes them apart, the whole front of the car, a fender, 30, 40 minutes, put the new one on, tie it up, you know, Chinese stuff, that's it.
No, I really sympathize with you and would like to have that business rather than empty buildings and you've done a great job on the property like it.
I'll make, you know, the greatest location you can, you know, when you turn around that corner, you know, it's family and then I have family that will do the work as far as the landscape. My brother's one that, you know, works at Allen for 25 years. Trust me, whatever you guys want as far as the way that ends has to look, I don't think that'd be the problem.
Oh, she's there. What do you say? Would description change your mind? I mean, because you are the expert in that area.
You want me to come over?
Yeah, come on.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I don't know if you know much about the paint, you know, the specialized paint booths, that's, that's the question.
I think the call, the question is if anybody's ever painted anything, 90 to 100, 90 to 95% of the work is done prior to painting. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about what work is being done inside that structure when you have people living above it. The paint booth isn't my biggest concern. That's outside, they can vent it, they can do whatever they want. I'm concerned about the people that live above this building. If he's doing whatever kind of work, I've seen cars catch on fire for, and I investigate these fires, it happens well after the event. It could be from many different causes, right? I've seen them catch on fire in auto body lots, just sitting there after they were in an accident four hours later. I've seen them catch on fire because they had a battery charger plugged into it. I've seen them catch on fire, we couldn't determine the reason, there was really nothing there. So these fires happen, right? My concern is the people who live above this structure. There is no separation for fire protection, there's no sprinklers, these people live above this structure, if there's a fire downstairs, they have very little to, no chance to escape that fire. It travels very rapidly and they can't get out. If he wants to sprinkle this building, that's fine, but this is an unprotected wood frame structure and those people are in jeopardy that live above that if there's any work being done downstairs. That's my concern and I have seen no mitigation that they've done that showed me that they can protect those people. If this was an auto body shop and nobody lived above it, great, that would be fine. But I believe, and my position is this board needs to protect those people that live above that shop and they've shown no mitigation to me that proves that they're protecting those people.
All right. Thanks for clarifying your comments about paint booths versus the...
Regardless of what the use is, having a car in there.
And it's also, as I said, the enforcement issue, what's going to happen a year from now, two years from now when this business is operating and you got to send the building department out there or the zoning department to find out what's being done. Things change over time and it's really, again, I digress, my position is the people who live above the structure.
Yeah, I mean, we can't focus on enforcement for, you know, as we're trying to decide this.
George, are there standard provisions that would be protective for this use and the residents overhead? For example, if there was a sprinkler system, then would you be more comfortable with it?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, there are these new low-cost PEX-based sprinkler systems, I think, that could, that might...
Yeah, sprinkler systems, smoke alarms, fire protection features, you know, there's ways to mitigate it, but they haven't discussed any of those. And we're learning new details about what, how the business operates currently. So in my opinion, it's much more than a detail shop, but that's for the board to consider. Again, I'm concerned about the people that live above.
All right, thanks again.
Great, I think that's, that's good. You spending 200,000 on a paint booth, probably you can consider the recommendation of the fire department to mitigate the safety of the other, of the view on the building.
I understand the safety. We kind of...
Well, yeah, what I was suggesting, they will probably defer tonight and then have you talk, go back to the department here and see if there's something else we can do there to move forward in a positive way.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, the structure is not the newest, but we can make it where it's, you know, safe for everybody's safety, I mean, even when you work in anywhere, it's first, you know? So that's not a problem. One of the things is...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we, this is a public hearing, we have a three-minute limit. I think it's time for us to move on.
Yeah, we have, we have to. That's why I was saying that you can, let's do, let's adjourn.
Let's adjourn to September 21st and then see where you want to take this.
An extra week. The supplemental deadline's not Monday here, so. All right, at this point, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Move to seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
If I may be so bold to interject, I just have one comment because I know this has come up a few times with the planning board. When it comes to having that discussion about sprinklers or some other feature, I think it's important to note that the board wants that installed prior to, not some future date down the line. So I think that that's the really key component here, too. You know, they're not looking to cut a deal, like they want that to be a part of whatever approval.
Well, that's why I was recommending that you talk to offline.
Right, I just figured you should know that now before you head into discussions.
Yep, that, if we can come up with some, you know, I know there's cheaper versions of sprinkler systems these days that I've heard about, so if we can work with the work with staff and figure out a way to do that, if the applicant is willing to put in some protection, then that may help us move along.
So just to clarify, it's prior to getting approval on the site plan, if a sprinkler system was installed, are you looking for a sprinkler system to be installed prior to getting approval?
No, 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 it would be part of the site plan.
As part of the site plan.
That's what I, okay.
Prior to operating that...
Correct, prior to sign, would that be prior to sign off on the site plan?
No, no, as part of the construction.
Correct, okay.
All right.
So I move the planning board defer further action on the 68 Van Wagner Road applications up to the following response to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following one through nine.
Actually, we had a tenth in there?
It says planning, planning board meeting, but ten investigate sprinkler and other safety issues in the building.
Snack on that.
Move to second, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks for all the discussions. Next up is Fairview Firehouse, speaking of fire.
Good evening, George Lithgow from J&amp;G Law, the fire district attorney. With me is Rich Tompkins from Mari Architecture and Chief Gilneck. With us also are Commissioners Grace and Omsbach, and we have Joseph Berger, who did the drainage work. We were before you in June, you asked for drainage, we did the drainage. We've looked, you guys have had the opportunity to review plans, reports from your planner and other departments. My English teacher said you should be very cautious when you leave with a conclusion. The conclusion to tonight, I hope, is that you will consider adopting a negative declaration. We have work with your attorney and planner to give you the material that you need to do that. I've looked at it this afternoon, it appears complete, thorough. I compliment your planner. And I think basically what we're looking at tonight, or what you're looking at tonight, is a fairly straightforward action. It's a renovation of an existing firehouse. It's the addition of the bays and reconfiguration of the bays, which will expand that space about 3,400 square feet, and it's the relocation of some parking on the site. All of those things are, would normally be secret type two actions because of the bombing and the fact that they're all being done together. An abundance of caution, after talking with Lisa about it, it's being treated as an unlisted action. And we believe that after you look at the logic and the facts outlined in the negative declaration, there's no significant adverse impacts. But I know this is a public hearing and maybe people in the audience who are interested in speaking as to the firehouse, so I did want to clarify the procedure. The only thing that we're asking from the board is a determination of significance that allows us to proceed forward with our bombing resolution and will be a vote on that. And I want to be very clear, if that vote doesn't pass, we're going to send you a letter and say we will not be seeing you in the near future. But if it does pass, we can then proceed forward with the site plan review, take care of many of the, take care of all the details of the site plan, those identified so far and those... and those that may come up in the course of further review. So we are not looking to, we're certainly not looking for approval tonight.
Yeah.
We're not looking necessarily for you to close the public hearing. Continue it to some date in the future. But we are looking for a seeker. And I guess the question is whether there is enough, if there are people in the audience that you would like us to briefly present the proposed renovations. Rich is ready to do that. It's basically repeating what we did in June. We have nothing really new about it. We do have the information from the drainage report demonstrates that we can get a drainage facility on to accommodate a situation after construction.
All right. Yeah, I would say at this point, just, you know, at least flash up the plans so that members of the audience and those on Zoom can see in case they did not attend the previous one. You don't have to go through it in great detail, but just share your screen to show what your, the changes.
So again, this is a an existing site plan of the existing firehouse with existing parking spaces. And this is a blow up of the proposed. So you can see on the north side, the shaded area is the 3,400 square foot bay addition that George mentioned. We are turning the bays facing north. This allows for us to have the apparatus pull off of the roadway and be able to back into the bays. We're currently, right now, all of the bays face the west and we have to basically stop traffic and back into those bays. That that north side addition will move the existing curb cut further to the north. It is slightly off-center from the road across the street. Again, we submitted a letter from DOT with preliminary approval for that and the relocation of the parking in the rear. On the front of the building, we are reducing the curb cut. There's currently a curb cut for five bays. It will now get reduced for three bays. That'll be two ambulance bays and the chief's vehicle. So they're much smaller vehicles to maneuver off of 9G. And then there is some paving work on the south side parking area just to make the parking and entrance to the building more handicap accessible. The interior renovations, part of the reason for the addition is to alleviate the stacked apparatus that are currently in a couple of the bays. And it also provides us space to move into to create bunk rooms for male and female employees. The reconfiguration of space will also provide full handicap accessibility to all the floors. There's a basement level and a second floor meeting room, which currently are not handicap accessible. So the addition of an elevator as part of the project will make all floors accessible. It also will increase space for cooking, bathing, showers, which we currently lack. And again, I know the chief has offered many people to come and visit the current conditions and and you'll see why we we desperately need this.
Yep, I understand. It's been an issue for many years.
Yes.
All right.
And then just briefly here, we do have the 3D rendering, which again, we reviewed last, last time we were in front of you. The top view is a view from Route 9G facing northeast with the existing fire department, the existing bays. Two of those bays here on the right side will be converted to a first floor meeting room for smaller meetings. And the bottom view here is of the four-bay addition on the north side.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. And I will, as you said, clarify, you know, we are, we will focus on the site plan at some point, but you guys have to worry about, you know, the referendum that they would put the, put your constituents to a vote at some point. Let's see, go to Kristen.
Thank you. So thank you for a thorough project overview. Application is on for a public hearing this evening for seeker purposes, as was noted. It's an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. The planning board declared their intent to be lead agency in May. To date, no objections have been received. And so then in my recommendation memo, I have a number of site planner related comments. They're pretty standard at this point. Those are items that we would traditionally work through with an applicant in any other site plan review process. So staff is is fairly comfortable with moving forward from a planning department perspective with seeker. That said, a draft negative declaration was prepared for the planning board and is in your packet for consideration. So staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing, discuss or hear comment, discuss the application, and then we'll have a discussion, I believe, and perhaps counsel wants to weigh in about when to adjourn a public hearing to or if we should close it. And then would defer further action on the application with comments. If you choose to open the public hearing, adjourn and go through with a seeker determination, there's also a language provided for you for that.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Go to engineering. Concerns about drainage and things.
Yeah, so there was a preliminary SWIP provided that did address some of the concerns. We do have some things that we need to work through and some revisions that need to be made in order to address everything and make sure that the SWIP is complete. That being said, we are comfortable at this point with moving, with the board moving forward should they choose to do so.
All right, thank you.
I do apologize. I wanted to make one note, too, that we did receive Dutchess County planning comments. Were required to refer the application to them for review. So it is a local concern with comments, comments about potentially sidewalk inclusion. And so again, that that conversation could continue as part of the site plan component. But, you know, it might be good for the applicant to hear where you stand on that now because I don't know how that inclusion might impact costs.
Yep.
Will increase them.
Everything increases. Lisa, do you have any comments?
My only comment was that the fire district has its elections in December. So it's unlikely that there will be an outcome on any referendum until at least after December. So we can discuss with the applicant when it might make sense to adjourn the public hearing until, I would say, January at the earliest, but that's a topic for discussion with the applicant and the board.
We're not necessarily committed to doing it at the same time as the district election. One of the points I did want to make adjourned, the question was, could we, could you adjourn till September? It's very important to the district for morale purposes, if nothing else, that this process continue as expediently as possible. So if we have the opportunity to put the referendum on and feel that we've had adequate opportunity to educate the public and make them aware of the issues and rationale, we would certainly like to do it sooner, but it may very well, we probably won't be back to you until January.
So if we were to.
I think that was a yes.
He was thinking out loud. I mean, the planning board is happy to work with you, continue to work through the site plan issues, but I understand that, you know, the outcome of the referendum determines a lot of the site plan expense, et cetera. So other than the sidewalk issue with the board to discuss.
Adjourn to, say, October and then then readjourn if there's nothing.
It's the applicant and board's preference. That's the only.
We're okay with adjourned till January.
Okay. You need a January date then, if you, January date. Our.
Eighteenth. January eighteenth.
Thank you.
My birthday is the day after that. My, no, all the important dates are right around planning for a meeting. Should we break it?
Wow, so was it the eighteenth?
No, the eighteenth is the meeting. My birthday is the next day. Justin, I said it was.
We're not going to adjourn it to your birthday. All right, we still have to open it before we adjourn it.
Okay.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Move to second. It called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the room tonight wish to comment on Fairview Firehouse? Can you unshare the screen at this point so we can see if anybody's waving their arms on Zoom? Seeing none in the, in the, in the audience, is there anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on the Fairview application? Take a second to look through, make sure. Yes, so there's a few people online that I don't see anybody who's trying to unmute or raising their hand. I think we're probably okay. All right, in that case, next time we'll the site plan, we'll move we adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Move to second. It called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now we can go around the board for commentary. Start with them.
Wholeheartedly, I'm with you. Don't have anything. I hope the public will approve whatever you ask them.
George?
Is the applicant open to sidewalks of the site plan?
I think you're going to have to do a look through this, like telephone poles right away.
So that's a soft now.
When I read that and I'm driving down, I'm like, oh, it's. So we can say when you, if you walk through and you take a look, you're like, wait a minute, you're going to put the sidewalk, like, almost next to the building.
Mm-hmm.
What makes sense?
The only other.
Sidewalks would be probably on the other side of the road.
Yeah. One of the other things that we were a little concerned with, with the sidewalks on our side of the street, would be crossing the apparatus, leaving the bays. So we still have three bays that face the road. And then as you get further north, we do have the curb cut for the north bays that would be exiting there. So it would just be another thing to look for in addition to the cars would be just one of the other concerns with that.
All right.
Other comment?
Rocco?
Nothing at this time.
What do people do now if they are walking on that side of the road? Do they, do they walk on the road?
Yes.
They don't walk, basically, I think.
I mean, there's sidewalks to the south and there are just, just one house.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no connection to the south because you have to cross the Central Hudson Heisman. So it's a ways down to get there.
I think there's one house in between you and where the sidewalk begins.
Yeah, yeah, so there's our property just to the south of us is a Central Hudson property. And then there's a house.
There is the transmission.
Correct. So the sidewalks now currently, I think, go down that side street. I'm not sure of the name of it right now. And they come out and end right at.
Yeah, and then there are Long Island Avenue, too, pretty close to the pavement.
Yeah, I think further south they, they continue, but they stop at that intersection.
Are they on the other side?
I don't believe so, no.
Nothing in front of the school.
No, there's nothing in front of the school. But there, but so as chief is saying, the poles are set off the road, but not enough to put the sidewalk between the existing curb and the, and the poles. And then as you get further north on our property, we do have a stone wall. So again, there's not quite the space to, it would have to be on the backside of the stone wall.
Okay. Let's see, what did I have here? So, yeah, it looks like you might, you guys might need some variances. There was a comment, and I don't know if you could talk about it. The water department had mentioned whether or not there'd be an upgrade to the water service. Is that something that's happening or no?
So we, we do need a sprinkler system, so we do need a little further investigation in that.
Okay.
As far as the domestic side of it, I don't believe there's a need for the upgrade. We just have to verify that for the sprinkler system.
And I also saw that there was a mention of needing a possible grease trap for the kitchen, but isn't the kitchen just a small kitchen where you guys cook like a couple times a day? I mean, I don't know that you would need a grease trap, but did you see that comment?
I did see that. I guess we would have to have that discussion with the water department to see because it, it is a smaller kitchen.
Right.
But.
I was a little confused by that. I'm like, it's not a restaurant, so I don't.
No.
But, okay, all right, that's all I had. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anything, Ben?
One minor thing. Are there any, you have fuel tanks on this property?
There, there's one existing fuel tank.
One?
One.
Fiberglass? Metal?
Steel.
An old tank? Okay.
I'll say new twenty years.
Okay. In a new. Galactic protection.
We used to have both gas and diesel. The gas went away when they upgraded it.
Sorry?
The gas tanks went away, so only just diesel fuel outback.
All right. That's it, nothing else.
All right, Peter?
Just two things. One is keep in mind that any roof-mounted units have to be screened. The other thing is I hope that we can do whatever, I hope we'll do whatever we can to get you on the ballot in November because a referendum is a costly endeavor. Clearly, you don't want to add more expense to your budget.
Well, we, the fire district has to hold its own special election or regular election. We noticed there's a regular election in December.
November.
No, in December. Fire districts are off on the special.
Okay.
Calendar. So we do hold it, we do publish it, and we have our own board of election inspectors. Maybe something that we wind up doing concurrently. We can have a both the regular commissioner election and the election on the referendum or the referendum at the same time. It's, it's really, you know, the fire district is really trying to get this done. One of the things that I pointed out when I was talking to Lisa yesterday, we did look at the possibility of a new firehouse back in 2015 through 18. And it started out at seven and then it went up to eight and then it went up to, it was like watching a speedometer when you're getting on the thruway. It became prohibitive and the district abandoned that concept and went back with Maury to look at renovations and that's what we were doing, working with the existing structure.
Good talk.
We'll need it. But hopefully not too much.
All right. Sounds good. Yeah, it's definitely something needed. I mean, it will comment you are getting more, more tax base in that area as more construction happens on the departments and in commercial space over by the, the old psych center, for example. So that should help, hopefully help your situation.
Comes, it's both a benefit and a burden.
Yeah, getting more services.
Hudson Heritage is going to bring 750 units and it's certainly going to enhance the tax base, but 750 units will bring service demand.
Services for that as well, so, yep. The comment I had was, well, look at the county's comments, you know, the sidewalk, I guess, is, it doesn't seem like a lot to walk to on your side. I think a sidewalk would be more beneficial on the other side of the road where houses could get down to the school. So I'm not sure I would pressure for a sidewalk there as well. The other thing is signal, signal lights, if you're moving that whole intersection, why, why does it not align directly with the other road?
So right now, there, there's a, an existing utility pole that's directly across the street. And that utility pole has wires that run parallel with 9G, but then they also go across the street as well. So it tends to be a pretty expensive move to, to move the pole.
Okay, I guess if DOT is okay with it. It seemed to, it would seem to, because I wasn't sure if you're moving the signal light too, that you're running out of the signal, the emergency signal if you're coming out of the bays. Would that, would that be moving up?
It's a little more used when they're coming back to the bays.
Would that be moving up to the new intersection?
More of the fire apparatus to the other side, get less than need for that.
Yeah, it, it's not so much pulling out, that's the issue. It's when they're pulling out of the bays, they have the lights, the sirens going and people notice that and stop. So it's, it's more of a turn, put the light on so when they're returning, they can back into the space.
So that might be something that gets eliminated completely.
Well, we do still have the two ambulance bays that they would have to, to.
Less used for, for that intended purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, my concern was if it was moving up towards the new intersection is and if it's offset, it's going to be confusing if it's not a full operating traffic signal for, if you know what I mean. All right, so that's not moving. All right, good job.
Well, the planning board determined that the post-application for Fairview Firehouse alterations in addition would not have a significant adverse impact on the arriving. alterations in addition would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated August 17th, 2023.
Second. Moved in seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following 11 through 20.
Uh, religion, one through 11?
One through 11.
Yep, sorry.
Yep.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Second. Move to the seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Wish you luck. I know it's a needed, uh, this upgrade, this, this. Next up is IBM's Palm System Building, 414.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Scott Miller with Scott Stevens of McCoy, and I am here with Tom McCoy representing IBM this evening. This is the first time you've seen this project.
Yep.
So, uh, did you want an overview of the project?
Yes.
If that would be helpful.
Brief, brief overview would be great. If you wouldn't mind just speaking into the microphones a little bit, just for the folks who are watching. Sounds fun, doesn't it?
The overview of this project is that IBM has a, a new mission coming into building 414. Um, this is a, a mission critical data center that cannot experience power outages or a loss of chilled water. Uh, so as such, it requires emergency generators and emergency chillers on the exterior of the building, so that's, um, what's driving our, our site modifications here.
All right.
Uh, just to give you an overview, this is the current IBM campus, um, and the cross hatch area is basically where the project is going to be located. So you can see it's pretty much, uh, pretty well inside the perimeter of the overall project. Uh, so basically what this consists of is the, um, addition of a small pump house and the location of chillers, uh, and also, um, generators to support the, the proposed project that's going on inside building four, 414. Um, we had previously submitted a driveway entrance and loading area, which is shown basically similar to this one that's shown on here, but that was actually stone, that was reviewed by the staff, and now we're coming back with a permanent addition, um, for that to service the, um, access into the building. Uh, it's not gonna be used very heavily, but we think do have, uh, heavy deliveries of this equipment.
Yep.
It requires a stabilized driveway coming in and a, a offloading area. So as we can see here, we have a small pump house which will support the chillers. We show a few extra chillers here because this design is still ongoing, from the aspect of making sure that we have the correct number, and we figured that we would rather show more than less, so we now, if, some of those might be removed, uh, moving forward. And then the same way with the, uh, proposed generators, which are located, um, the five generators that are located there. That's pretty much a, uh, an overview, this is River H Road, runs alongside the project. We submitted the package, um, that included some site grading, and we also did add some landscaping as well to the overall project. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. Here's the landscaping, uh, that we're proposing in relationship to the grading next to the site.
What's the hatch area there?
That is a, um, a native pollination garden.
Okay, that's what's still there.
Yeah, so, um, that's, that's natural wildflowers, which would actually have, um, plants that would facilitate bees, butterflies, that type.
Kind of replaced building 938 there. All right.
All right.
Kristen?
I did warn the applicant that there were a few folks here who work for IBM, so I might be some shared history discussion going on here, but, um, yeah, thank you for the overview, the project's on for a public hearing this evening, seeker review for an unlisted action subject to an uncoordinated review, coastal consistency review, site plan review, and architectural review. The applicant provided a coastal, coastal consistency review form, um, and staff has reviewed it, that looked to be in good shape. Uh, we also just had, most of the cycling comments that remain are really just about including some more detail on the plan. Um, and I think, you know, providing the written responses to supplement the resubmission when you come back, I think it, it'll be fruitful for moving forward with a recommendation to, um, grant an approval at a future meeting. Um, I know that there was some conversation early on between, um, Scott and I about, um, area of disturbance, and I do apologize if it got lost in the conversation, um, but we, uh, there's a threshold that's set by New York State DEC for the requirement of a SWIP.
Right.
Um, Town Engineering Department reviews that, you know, to see, okay, have we exceeded this threshold, uh, or are we under it? Um, at .95 acres of area of disturbance, uh, it rounds up to one acre, so unfortunately that would still trigger a SWIP. So there's this conversation of, are you really at 9.95 acres, are you more or less? Um, and just demonstrating that on a plan to be reviewed by our engineering department.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
We submitted, um, we are going to try to get it below the .94, uh, at 9.94 to avoid the, the application.
Sure, and that will then be evaluated by our engineering department. Um, and so again, we, they were sort of taking it at face value based on the updated EAF, um, but they also need a plan that's demonstrating that, um, and other materials, and I just stole your-
For me, that's fine.
That's great. We all work together here. So staff is recommending this evening, uh, that we, the planning board open the public hearing, hear any comments, have a discussion with the applicant, adjourn the public hearing, defer action with comments, um, and I would expect that, um, I don't know if it's, it's feasible for your team, um, but it actually works out that this month there is, um, a, what we like to call in the planning department, a bonus week.
Extra week.
So next week you would have the ability to provide, uh, or collect your materials, work through any of the comments, provide those written responses to comments and the updated plans, and make that submission for the September meeting on August 28th. Uh, that does not come around often, usually the materials for the following meeting are due the following Monday of this meeting. So, I mean, obviously that's for you and your team to kind of have a discussion with the planning board, but I wanted to put that out there.
Well, we, we did get the review comments early, which, again, is helpful, and we are planning to resubmit on the 28th for the-
Okay.
All right.
Yes, so that-
That's good.
Yeah, it, it does give us an opportunity to review everything that you have, and then if there's any questions, we can clarify those at these meetings.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Kristen?
Oh, I'm all set.
Okay. Then I will.
Thank you.
I have nothing to say, Kristen covered it. Now, uh, just to reiterate, uh, there is a little discrepancy on the disturbance, so if you could provide a, 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 show the limit of disturbance with the acreage, that .95 is the trigger, and that will be very restrictive trigger.
Yeah.
It'll require a lot more for, you know, permanent stormwater practices and quality, quantity, treatment, all sorts of fun things.
Well, our, um, yeah, our comments may affect the-
Right.
The disturbance too, so.
Yeah. Um, other than that, um, there's, there's a handful of comments, I'll just kind of bullet point a couple of them. Um, the, it's a little unclear how the loading dock is gonna actually work, the way the turning movement is, you're kind of showing the truck pulling in and then backing out, but there's no, it does, it's not clear how the loading dock is intended to be used.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that, um, the, um, phase zero plan, which was the one that showed the gravel-
Yeah.
Actually had the turnaround movements on there, I thought that was included in this.
Okay.
So we'll clarify that, but the intent is, it's actually, it comes on in a, a more of a, a flat bed truck, so there is no actual loading dock there, it's a loading area. And that little turnaround is actually, that we show there is actually for fire code. And then also too, is, is everything's basically done on level, so it's entering the building on level, on grade, is the finished floor.
Okay.
So, uh, but we'll clarify that with the truck turning movements.
Okay. Um, another concern is pedestrian access, pedestrian walkways. You're, you are altering the sidewalk a little bit, so I just want to make it, you know, is it intended to still be a pedestrian area? Um, there is, I think there's some hatching shown on there. If you are intending to keep it open for pedestrian access, maybe providing a crosswalk across that loading dock area might be helpful. Um, it, it sounds like it won't be a very active loading dock, so maybe there's no-
Or that very active walking area.
Okay.
So it, there's, it's gonna be very limited in both uses.
Okay.
So.
Well, it's been a historically very active sidewalk used for people walking around at lunchtime, so I don't know if the people have come back after the COVID and stuff, because I would, uh, would want to see maybe the sidewalk surfing, you know, kill more along the road and around it.
Okay.
But we'll get to comments.
I'm just concerned again about the site disturbance.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think, I think that's pretty much my bullet point.
All right, thanks. This is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the audience left that wishes to comment on this, or online, on the IBM application? Okay, I do have some signups. Here, is there Scott Miller here still? Yeah, they signed up.
I figured you needed that for the record, so.
Cheryl Nichols. Cheryl's there, she's with him as well. She's there. Okay, and, and Thomas. Okay, so you were not, uh, part of that. Good we have that for the record, though. All right, uh, seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Let's go around the board for, for comments. Peter?
Uh, my only comment is I, I found this application to be electrifying.
Pretty good. Throwing a few absolute zeros and whatever. Just that what Peter said came to shock them.
Wow. I'll, I'm leaving. Um, yeah, I just, uh, wanted to reiterate what the water department said, they had, they had mentioned that the backflow prevention was overdue, so maybe, if, if that hasn't been done yet, that should be done.
Well, we put either one of those in.
Okay, yeah, that sounds-
Doesn't really directly relate to this, but obviously we'll tie it.
Okay, and I, I do think that you should look into that possible pedestrian walkway. Yeah, so if you can, see what you can do there.
Uh, one comment, uh, only for Mr. McCoy, I believe. Uh, you said that, that you're still not sure what the scope of this project will be, and that will determine how many pads that you'll need on there, do you have any estimate when you'll know what the scope is?
Uh, that's currently under evaluation based on the, the budget of the project, so they'll determine the extent.
I know that, but I mean, you have any estimate, a month, six months?
Uh, probably closer to a month and six.
Closer to a month, so it won't be available for next meeting?
Uh, potentially.
Okay, thank you.
If I could follow up off of that question, do you expect, did you demonstrate the empty pads as sort of the maximum number that would be a part of this proposal, or?
That's what we, yes.
That's why you planned it, laid it out that way?
Yes. But they're still evaluating, they're going back between the number because of the size, you know, like some might be bigger, some might be smaller. So, again, we prefer to show everything that may be site disturbed now.
Okay.
And then we can always take it off versus having to try to add it later.
And we could manage that as a field change, you know-
Right.
During that construction phase, so.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a follow up then, uh, since there's no, a quantum two, could there be a quantum three, four, whatever? And, and would that fit in, uh, in building 414, or would that have to go elsewhere?
Uh, it could go in that building.
You don't have to disclose anything proprietary, but I'm just, uh, thinking ahead here.
Yeah, it would depend on the, the amount of that next phase, if it would be contained within that building or not.
It could be contained within that.
Yes.
Okay, so your plan, and for those pads, now you've got enough space there to handle all that if it comes about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pretty big building, it's good to, good to see it reused for something.
Yeah.
It's been vacant for-
I lived there for a while, I understand.
Yeah.
I have no comment.
And lastly?
I'd say keep the sidewalk, because you might hire more people with the quantum coming in.
Yeah, I mean, my comment is the, you know, I used that sidewalk many times myself, and IBM pays people to walk at lunch, so, for health. Yeah, they, they have, they're rather used to it anyway, the health, health used to give you a stipend if you exercised. Should do that here. But, uh, just want, you know, instead of just cutting it off, if there's a way to work around the, go around next to the road maybe, and, and back up, and back in again.
We did, we did continue the circulation, it's just not in the five path, we used it as part of the, uh-
Or if it goes, or if it's just along the building, front, front of the building, if that works out. I just didn't know if it was okay for people to be walking next to the chillers or the-
Yeah, yeah, it'll be fine.
They don't want to zap them down to absolute zero.
Yes.
Those, those, is that what's called the golden eye, the chillers, is that, you're not sure?
Yeah. I'm, I'm a site guy.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Guess we're, we're good, then that was my main concern, was making sure there's still a pedestrian path through there for making that connection.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application, direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following 1 through 10.
Second. Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good for now, we'll see you next month. East Hill Village. I'm gonna calm down, Jeff. A few more changes.
Not many tonight.
As things progress.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and, and Board, thank you. Uh, Jeff Kane, representing the East Hill Village and, uh, MXTC Development, if I can share my screen?
Sure. Sound too- Sure.
I'm surprised he still asks, it's very nice of him.
All right.
Okay, um, so, yes, uh, we are here with the, um, the 23rd, um, site plan amendments, and, and I thought it, uh, important to, uh, just to kind of say really what, what's going on here, but a lot of, a lot of East Hill Village has been constructed, and a lot of the remaining space has already been programmed. Um, we're kind of in the, uh, in the, in the back corner of, the back quarter of, of the, of the project, and I wanted to just kind of show you, I kind of, I color coded these buildings so you could see, uh, where we are in terms of the, uh, in terms of the project. The, the blue here, these are the residential buildings, this is the, the west side of the project, west side of, of 44, so the blue residential building's been completed and occupied. Um, these kind of, um, purplish-brownish buildings in here, those are, um, some fort buildings, that's the, the community center and the, and the mail building leasing office. Um, the green here, this is the commercial core green, are the completed, uh, commercial buildings. Uh, the orange are the under-construction commercial buildings, uh, and the red ones are the, are the buildings that are, that are really yet to be, uh, yet to be, um, designed. I mean, they've been kind of programmed here, we have them as, as placeholders, these, uh, these buildings, but you can, again, kind of see where we are in terms of the, the overall design of the, of the project. but you can again kind of see where we are in terms of the overall design of the project. Then on the east side, same convention of colors, the blue buildings are the completed residential buildings. We've completed all of the multifamily solely residential buildings. So those are the last one of building 12, which we're hoping to get their CO1 in the next day or so. And then in the commercial side, the green buildings are complete and open. Orange are under construction and those, the red on the other sheet, but the color's washed out, but those other buildings are the ones that are remaining for final design as part of this project. So again, final programming is now proceeding on those remaining commercial, remaining multi-use commercial residential buildings. And there aren't a lot, so this is much simpler, right? So what are we focusing on now on the last part of the project? On the west side, it's building G, which has always been programmed as a daycare building, building O2, which is a smaller building next to the ambulatory surgery center. And then on the east side, building P, which actually has a foundation in the ground, kind of the difference there is going to be, is that going to be a two-story or three-story building? We know the footprint, but how big is it, might it be? I1, which will probably be, you know, two or three tenants by the time is all as I said and done in terms of programming, and building H. Again, we don't know exactly the size of buildings I1 and H, but they're going to be in this area and they're going to be, you know, they're going to be in line with the other buildings along 44. It's, you know, the general area, but not the exact footprint of how they're going to be. And are they, you know, some combination of two and three stories ultimately is kind of the conversation. And then building J, and those are the last of the commercial buildings that we have projected.
Yep.
As you may recall from the zoning, there's no zoning cap on commercial area, there's no zoning cap on units above commercial, provided certain ratios are kept between residential and commercial and between retail and non-retail. So we've, but we have under Seeker worked with you to examine certain square footages of commercial and certain number of apartments over the commercial. So as the development winds down, we've started to calculate, well, you know, what could happen? And kind of based on the feedback that we're getting from tenants, potential tenants, potential owners as they come in. And by the way, that's usually six, eight, nine, 12 months between the time somebody comes to us with an idea and the time we're here to you. So we have, a lot of stuff happens before we get here. We're able to kind of understand what meets their needs. But as that development kind of winds down, we're looking at what is that max buildout? And to meet that demand, what we're asking for is a programmatic review of an additional 3,000 square feet of commercial space and an additional 20 residential units above the commercial space. I don't know that we use every square footage, but what happens really is, and I guess this is really a seeker review of those impacts, because what happens is, as the users come to us, you know, they go back, they talk to their financiers, and then the question is, well, does the zoning, does the application, can this be supported? And if everybody came in with their max, we were going to be, we were going to be short. And so we needed to be able to provide the basis under Seeker that yes, the project could support that project, not that we can't, we don't want to tell you, well, yeah, as long as Ma doesn't ask for 3,000 feet, we can support you. No, we want to be able to say that yes, all of these applications could be supported within the footprints allotted. Again, a lot of it does depend on whether we're at a two-story or a three-story building here. So this provides that kind of max buildout buffer that would accomplish or would really kind of meet the max demand here. And we think it's a small increase, again, it's 3,000 square feet in commercial, but it is kind of that close in terms of our calculations. And the 20 residential units above the commercial, part of what's driving that is we've seen over the last couple of years is the rental market has gone towards a smaller unit, so not, we're seeing demand for three-bedroom units, but the ones and the twos were a lot more actioned. So again, the same number of beds, but more units, but the code relates to units. And so that's why we're asking for the additional units in terms of units above the commercial. Not that, again, I know that we're going to use every 21 of those, but we were asking for the seeker review to be on that, kind of that max, not. And again, we haven't updated, as has been consistent in this project, we haven't updated the footprints for these buildings. We've always had square footage programmatic changes in buildings, and then once there's a final application, we come to you, we've got a final footprint, we've got an architectural review for you. This is again a programmatic review, a seeker review of what that max final buildout could be. So in the seeker document that we've submitted, we've examined all of the impact areas that were reviewed in the earlier seeker, kind of the major seeker applications. The findings have been, were adopted in 2018 and amended in 2020. And so we looked at all of those secret impact categories. Of course, those are reviewed every time we come in for an amended site plan review, but we looked at all of them in depth. Even with this additional program, the water supply remains sufficient. Sanitary sewage collection, transportation, treatment has the available capacity. Stormwater collection and treatment systems have sufficient capacity. Traffic demand has actually decreased from initial projections. And so, which may seem somewhat of a surprise, but two things happened. One is the more specificity of our users has been less intense than reality. And one of those in particular has been the, we had a drive-through bank, and drive-through banks have a big impact on traffic flow. That's no longer part of the program here, that really kind of created some space in the traffic demand and it's led to this projected decrease in projections. The impact on Arlington schools with the additional units was really minimal, an estimated four students, and that's combined across all grades K through 13, so it's not a lot of impact for Arlington. Tax generation, of course, is expected to increase with more units, more commercial square footage. Again, with just a minimal expected increase in demand for services. And probably the only category that you could argue was an increase is more noise, only because a little more square footage takes a little more noise to build. And that's expected to be minimal, expected to be during the permitted timeframes. By permitted, I mean under the town zoning organs, so.
I know there were some noise and dust concerns from neighbors initially, but has that popped up at all recently?
You hear before I do, and I haven't heard anything in a year, but that doesn't mean they aren't out there.
From what I hear, it's.
We haven't had.
Everything's mostly built up, so.
And part of that is, right, it's, we're not, we're no longer building next to neighbors, we're building next to ourselves is part of that.
More internal now.
Yes. So those are the, right, that's my intro.
And the drive-through, as you said, was missing. The drive-through bank is gone.
The drive-through bank is.
Replaced by the drive-through surgery. They have to stop there.
Instead of taking out a lung, you take out a organ.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for the overview. Let's go to Eric.
So thank you, Jeff, that was very helpful. And the comments, we didn't, this, that explanation would have been, wasn't entirely clear when the review was initially conducted, so that's very helpful. So with that said, there are still, the recommendation is still for a, still for seeker consistency determination and for conditioned approval. There was, we reviewed and consultants concurred with the seeker analysis by MHTC. On the traffic analysis, that was the only one that was, we sent that out for review by the traffic consultant that did the original, that worked on the original EIS and the previous amended seeker findings, and they also agreed with it. That in fact there is a decrease, as Jeff described. So rather than, the incremental effects were negligible enough that we agreed that it was consensus that an amended finding statement wasn't warranted. The changes here were not significantly different than the changes of other recent incremental changes. So with that, you have those resolutions in front of you, and there's just a few comments to clean up the plans. There's still some questions about the clouding and the changes and minor consistency issues. I'm sure that'll easily be addressed.
Yep. All right, thank you. Any concerns from you?
Just, you know, a couple standard comments. One to hit on is the water and sewer. There were a couple things that Andy would like to see updated, the rates are from 2016, they're a little out of date. There's also a potential connection with AP packaging next door for them to tie into the sewer, so we're looking to see that included in the engineer's report. And then Eric kind of touched on it. It looks like there's some minor modifications to the parking area around building I. So we're just looking for some, a little brief explanation on what the proposed changes are, basically. Right, we have that clouded, I will, the clouds are a mistake. They were changed as part of the 22nd amendment and somehow the clouds didn't disappear, so I will. Okay.
I mean, in general, those clouds have been helpful from seeing changes.
Yes, very helpful, I will say that. After 23 amendments.
Yes. All right, thanks. This is on for public hearing, right? So I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to second, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Anyone, can you unshare now, Jeff?
Yes.
Not seeing anyone in the room wishes to comment. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application for Eastdale Village? Not seeing anybody? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to second, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Go around for comments. Peter?
What is the status of the treatment plant in the industrial park?
It still services AP packaging, the former Pickensy Business Park, Dyson Racing, vacuum manufacturing, and the town park. There is, they have made application to the health department to tie that system into what is now the town sewer system that runs from a pump station on our property, then ties into a pump station at Contra Village, pumps over the hill, goes up the line of Tucker Drive to the.
My question is, why is an AP flowing to them?
Well, that's the idea, is AP will eventually, assuming that gets this.
No, no, I'm telling you, why is an AP flowing to the plant that's already on their property?
That's on their property?
But it's also part of.
The idea is to convert that treatment plant to a pump station and pump to the town system.
So the plant will no longer really be functioning as a plant, as a treatment plant?
Correct, it'll be, yeah, it'll be from a pump station.
What's the calculation for AP, what would be their flow daily?
I. I believe it's 6,000 gallons a day.
Six?
And it's set up to pump off-hours, I believe. So in the evening, they have it set up to kind of have a holding pattern until later in the evening when the demand at Eastdale is lower, so that all the other stations can keep up with it.
Have you looked at whether or not that effluent requires any pretreatment?
As far as what's coming in?
The AP, yeah.
I haven't been heavily involved in the review, I'm not, I think it's just sewage. I don't think there's any industrial connections.
Well, without the industrial connection, 6,000 gallons a day is a lot. If it's not part of their process, I mean, it can't be from their.
Well, it's all, it's all the wastewater for the entire property.
Right.
Which includes that, you know, the other building, the other businesses processing and all that. Yeah, I'm not, I can check with Andy.
Yeah, I think we should know.
Well, yeah, and I'm sure that's been part of the review. I just haven't.
That is still being, is still under review. You know, the final determination hasn't yet been made. So there's still a number of things that have to be worked out, but.
Does that include Dyson Racing and the other things on that side?
Yeah, so it would basically be abandonment of the existing sewer plant.
Right, which would be beneficial from an environmental standpoint, because obviously the sewer plant empties into the Wapangis Creek. Taking it offline would be a positive.
Will they be a tenant of the fourth ward district or will they be a sub-tenant of your property?
They would be, they would not be a sub-tenant to us, they would be, their capacity would come from both their, their capacity would come from their own deal with the town, we're not involved.
So it has nothing to do with your 90,000.
That's correct.
AP data. Okay, thanks.
I mean, they have to make sure it's sized for future growth of their business as well. Right.
But that's subject to a separate agreement with the town?
Right, yeah, they will have their own tenancy agreement.
As long as all the pipes are sized correctly. All right, anything else, Peter?
No.
Ben? Nicole?
So, well, fire department is here in the audience, but I noticed that they said something about a connection at building G, that it was on the southeast side, it actually needed to be relocated to the northeast side. Did you see that comment?
I did, that's, building G is one of the buildings that we haven't programmed yet, but we'll make that change on, as we resubmit. And then when we get a real building, we'll make sure it's in the same location.
Okay, and one other quick question. I saw your comment about the 20 possible new apartments bringing around 50 people? Is that right?
Those are calculations, they're kind of a national average. You know, I didn't compare those against what our apartments generate, but yeah, that's.
It's a lot of people.
It's an average.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Rocco?
No real comments on this plan, but maybe you can let me know when that Asian restaurant.
Because I've been looking at that and it sounds intriguing.
You've been looking at it, my window looks out.
Okay.
The, I understand they're waiting to get their liquor license for the open, and that's really what's holding them up. So, you know, it could really happen at any point, and we're all looking forward to it.
New York State Red Tape.
I have no comment, thank you.
No comment.
I guess my only question, is that still a daycare, that building G?
It, we thought we weren't going to have a daycare, but it now looks like we might have a daycare again. It's one of those, one of those things, that again, that's.
Yep, seeing babies around on site these days.
Right, but it's a long, you know, it's always a long road between when you think it's going to happen and it does, so.
Yep. All right.
Okay. All right, so I move the planning board find that Eastdale Village application for the 23rd amended site plan involves incremental changes in the Eastdale Village project of natural bulk and magnitude and scope, and that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March 15th, 2018, and amended September 17th, 2020, and modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received July 24th, 2023.
Second. Moved to second, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village 23rd amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the reviewing departments and agencies and sub-responses to be reviewed by the planning department as the adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, the following one through eight.
Second. Moved to second for conditional, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. And do you have any architecture to present?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, those buildings, GH, I1, J02, and P, we've never done architectural review on those buildings to date and not prepared to do it now. I know that we'll come back in with specific site plans on those.
All right. Look forward to that in the future then. Look forward to that in the future, then.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a few adjournments. At Tucker Drive, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Stratford Town Homes, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. And Casper Kill South Road Development, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. At this time, I move we allow public comment of any other items on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Anyone remaining in the audience or in Zoom call that wishes to comment on the remaining agenda items? Do a quick scroll of the Zoom attendees.
Zoom, these are all people who are just related to the application?
Looks like seeing none, I move resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Salt Point Center. Wait a second. Thought we were rid of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Jeff Kane representing the Salt Point Center, and joined by, by a few folks as well. Ken Castimento with the LRC, Phil Reilly and Michael Amendola with Colliers Engineering, and of course, the applicant client, Mr. Jacob Wazel. Hello, everyone. Welcome back and. Yes, welcome back, we've been here before. Maybe, Ken, maybe can, can, can.
Mike, can I share, please?
Yes, you may.
Go ahead, Ken.
Everyone concede, correct?
Yep.
All right.
And, and, right, Ken's, Ken's group's been doing a lot of work on the, on the site plan, and I, and I, and I say that in kind of in the, in the context of, you know, we've been working with, with, with you, the board, and working with staff for, for, for many months, really, on this project, and, um, working hard to really kind of, to meet, meet your, your comments and concerns in developing this, this project. It remains a, a mixed-use project, consistent with the, the, the Salt Point Center zoning. 89 residential units, just over 20,350 square feet of, of commercial. Three, three buildings. Building, Building 1 is a four-story building with a commercial below three stories of residential. Building, Building 2, again, three-story building, first floor commercial, two floors of residential. And Building 3, which is again, four stories, so Buildings 1 and 3 are the four-story buildings. Building 3 is, is mostly residential, has a little bit of commercial, commercial in it, as a, as a mixed-use building, but is mostly a residential building there in front of the, again, four stories, in front of the, in front of the hillside. And, and again, as a, as a, as a, as a point, we, we understand that we will need variance for the fourth story on Buildings 1 and 3. It meets the, meets the zoning for the, for, for height. But the extra, extra story enabled, I think, this project to be a better project, less, less ground disturbance as, as, as part of the, part of the development.
Yep.
We, and I, and, you know, we, and I, we want to, again, get, get some feedback from the board as we proceed here, but, you know, I want to say this, this, this plan has really been developed with, with, with comments from the board to kind of compress the, compress these buildings, so they had a better relationship visually, better relationship through the pedestrian connections, and, and, and more landscaping. And what Ken is showing here, really kind of the, you know, where we, how we started and where we've come, we think it's a better, a better project for the, for the feedback from the, from, from the board, and, and again, hope, hope, hope you do as well. And we've also, you know, worked on the, on the parking and parking demand, and what's, what's the appropriate amount of parking here based on the number of residences and, and the, the, the commercial space here. And the code recognizing that it is mixed-use says the commercial parking should be two spaces per thousand square feet and one and a half parking spaces per, per residential unit. It works out to 175 parking spaces. We have 169 parking spaces, slightly less. But again, I think that was with some encouragement from the board to reduce parking. We think they're sufficient, we've, we've asked Colliers to prepare a, kind of a demand analysis to, to see, well, are we, are, are, are we just thinking we've got enough parking or isn't enough parking? So we, we've, we've done that calculation and certainly can share that with the board.
That does not take some sharing into account, does it?
Say again?
And that does not take sharing into account?
Absolutely, and it's, it's the shared, it's the, it's the, kind of that, that peak and one of the, one of those uses shared, and yes, that's the, that's, that's what, that's what that demand analysis shows, and we're happy to, we're happy to share that, that sharing with you. And we've, we've also, again, looked at your comments regarding, you know, amenities and opportunities for open space, and, and recognizing the, not just the code requirements for open space, but also what are the opportunities here, understanding that, that, that there are many opportunities, kind of both these large areas where the pedestrian walkway is, on the floodplain, the hillside, which is really an amenity, including the, the connection to the Dutch County Rail Trail. But also internally, there are other areas. You can see behind Building 1, on both ends of Building 3, the end of Building 2 there, that can be developed as some of these usable open spaces for some, for, for, kind of passive open space uses within the, within the project here, consistent both with, with the code and really with, with how people will, will use the land, how they'll use the, use the spaces. So we've got all these identified as, as opportunities here, and I look forward to working with the, with the board on how to, how to demonstrate the, how the best to use the, use that land.
That's really very, stop there. I can pull up the site plan if you want, Jeff, just the color.
Right.
To keep talking about.
Yeah, right, so there, you know, we, we recognize from the, from the, from the comments received, there are, you know, a couple of things that, that we'd like to do. One is certainly meet with county planning, they've asked to meet with us again on this, on this project. And we, we, we look forward to their, their input on, on this, as we do yours. Good comments from, from Carol Knapp on, on the aquatic resources permit and, and how best to meet the, the objectives of the, of the, of the, of the town plans on that. And we'd like to, with your, with your support, meet with Carolyn on the field and, and go and talk through how, how best to, how best to address that. You know, I mentioned the parking analysis, and I guess the only thing we can get into, if you want to see it, is you asked us to look at kind of an internal roundabout to match the roundabout on, on, on Salt Point Turnpike, and, and we can kind of show you, we can show you why, why it didn't work. We can show what it looks like, and that you hope you would come to the same conclusion. We can get into that again if you, if you'd like to, but that's really kind of where, where, where.
I think we discussed that before, and it just takes a lot of room, and it's not.
Right.
Our traffic consultant agreed with that, I believe.
Okay, I guess maybe I did, yeah, okay. It's, it's, it, it got, it got complicated, and the, the, the potential decree, more backups, not fewer backups, just made it not work. I think that's, that's the, that's, that's the nutshell on that. But we did, we did look at it and, and recognize that it wasn't the right thing to do on this, on this project.
All right.
Again, we, we look forward to your, to your comments here. We understand tonight is, is the, the most we're going to do is, is getting lead agency circulation. We certainly want to get your comments as we, as we move forward.
Get it started. All right, Eric?
Would you like me to stop sharing, Mr. Chairman?
Can keep up for right now, and then when we get the public hearing, we get.
No problem.
Oh, right, no public hearings. Never mind, let's leave it up for a minute. So we can talk to it.
So, yeah, this is actually the, the first time the application in this form is in front of the planning board, so the recommendation, the action before the board tonight is really only for a declaration of lead agency and circulation, with no other action to take tonight. However, discussion, you know, discussion is obviously encouraged. Some technical but substantive things, like we'll need the special use permit application. That approval was, was omitted from the application and will be required. Resolution with Carol Knapp of whether or not aquatic resource permit is required or not. There's some technical zoning issues regarding the density of layout to be addressed in perhaps in the table, similar to Eastdale Village, identifying the relationship between the residential, commercial uses and the thresholds required and the ratios required by the code. So that, that will all be forthcoming. The main focus for the planning board tonight, I think, is, is, you know, your comments and review of the layout. Layout and circulation. JMC, they can't be on tonight, but as Jeff mentioned, they're, they, they did find the internal roundabout concept was probably, that this was, this proposed layout, the changes that were made with this revision, actually worked better. He did, he had a number of comments which are in the packet, including the, the pedestrian crosswalks. You also have comments from DOT about providing the fourth leg, fourth pedestrian leg on the round, on the outside of the roundabout, whereas I think the, the plan was contemplating three. So those are all issues that we'll get worked out in the future. County planning, there is a referral to county planning, we don't have a response from them. They did indicate they had some concerns. They're tentatively, they still have more time to provide the response, their 30-day referral period. They're anticipating that it will be, they're anticipating an incomplete response, which they're going to tag to the SWIP, but mostly they just want an opportunity to, to discuss the layout some more. And so we passed on that request to, to Jeff, and we'll, we foresee that hopefully happening in the next few weeks.
All right. Sounds good. Let's, I mean, as you said, your traffic consultant did review it, and he has quite a few comments there that he can read through. I'm sure you see, but he generally was okay with this latest layout that we've come up with, and was happy with all the pedestrian connections that have been made in this latest go-around. And the other consultant we have on, online is, is Carol Knapp.
She is on, yeah.
Maybe you can, maybe you can unshare at this point?
Yes. I'm here.
First get Bobby.
It's okay, it's fine. Carol and I will probably talk about the same thing anyway, so let her go first.
All right.
Am I on? Sorry.
You're online.
Okay, so I, I've spoken to Jeff, this is a, a site that has been designated as a town center, but identified in the open space plan and natural resource inventory, so presents a little bit of a conflict. So basically, our focus now has changed to how we can allow for the proper development while being as mindful as possible to the prime farmland designation, the riparian, riparian zone or stream buffer, the declining grass habitat that lives on site. So we've provided some suggestions to provide for that disturbance within the floodplain, because basically, all that, all that, the conflict comes within the, the floodplain balancing area. So we've provided some, some suggestions to mitigate that disturbance to the greatest extent possible. Reuse of existing vegetation, reuse of existing soils, trying to, once the balancing is done, trying to recreate that grassland, including not having a mowed area in, amidst the, the pathway. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with the River to Ridge Trail over in New Paltz. Basically, they have a pathway, and then it's mowed for about five or 10 feet on either side, and then it's left to be natural. It just allows for some, you know, moving off the path or some walking of dogs without picking up ticks and everything else. Some comments about landings turtles and Indiana bat that I think we can get past, and possible use of a, a community garden back there, because it is a, a prime farmland site. So Jeff's team has been receptive to these comments, and I'm sure we can work through to the greatest extent possible.
All right, thank you, Carol. I think a community garden is, is a good, good idea. There's a lot of people in this area, as well as the tenants here.
And I'll say two of the, two, just to jump in a little bit, but two of the comments that Carol made that really struck home with me, one was, we should be able to do our grading here not to impact the existing tree line. And that's going to be a real focus as we look at that again, to not, to not have to, to take trees down along the, along the, the border of the, of the, of the, of the flood area. And, and two is that when we do go in to, to do the, the, kind of the, the balance here, it's important to strip that topsoil, put it off to the side, obviously, soap fence, stabilize it, do whatever exercises we're going to do, and then, and then, and then don't sell that topsoil, but put that topsoil back on the, back on the, on the site here. It's a, it's a, it's, it can be very important for this, for, for recreation of the habitat, and, and that, I think those points really struck home, so.
Proper separation of things, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're going to try to recreate using the same soils and vegetative material to try to replicate what's back there as best as we can.
All right.
That's the suggestion.
Sounds good. Glad, glad you're willing to work with Carol and get through those issues. Bobby?
Yeah. Just the usual, you know, site comments. I would say the, the big thing we want to hit on is the stormwater, the SWIP. The, the limit of disturbance boundary, I believe, needs to be expanded a little bit to make sure you're, you're showing all the proposed grading within that disturbance that's going to be taking place in the floodway, and how that might impact the, the town wetland buffer requirements.
Yep, we can work with that, I think.
Yep. Also, on that note, with, with preparation of the SWIP and trying to understand how to go about the stormwater, is going to be working with the floodplain, the hunt, you know, the storm events, the groundwater table, and separation on practices and things like that. So we're going to need to do some, some thorough soil testing, most likely, and, and try and work around all those extra requirements with the floodplain being involved.
So Bobby, if I can just, we did do soil tests already, and we've actually worked with Alton, our floodplain development designer on the team to, to put together the plan for the stormwater, and we'll, we'll just put it all together into a cohesive document for you and Andy to review as it goes forward.
Okay, great. We'd also like to see a cut and fill analysis, because it, it does look like a substantial amount of, of material is going to move. There's some comments on the lighting, please take a look at those. And, you know, just, that's about it. Andy was a little concerned with the, the placement of the water meter. It looks like it's going to get buried under some grading and might cause it to be pretty deep and need a pretty substantial riser, that was one thing he pointed out to me, so.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, because I know Tommy, the water department, had thought it was a good location, so we'll just, we'll just, we'll look at the details and work it out.
It's a tight spot, I couldn't really look at it, figure out where else it could go, but maybe, maybe we could work with the grading a little bit to help that out.
Absolutely, we'll figure it out.
All right, sounds good, thank you. Guess we'll go around the board for comments from.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to still leave it up?
Yeah, yeah, keep it up there.
That's fine.
We can look to it. I'll start by saying the architecture looks good. I think that's, the way you've done it makes the four stories look less like four stories, such. Let's go around, let's start with Ben. Oh, yeah, just.
This appears to be pretty close to what the Salt Point Center was hoping to achieve. So I think would be real asset to that part of the town. Are there gonna be any roof-mounted units?
The, in talking with the architect, we think they will all be roof-mounted. We're not gonna have them on the ground and the idea is that they will be screened. And I know we're showing full peaked roofs in this elevation, but I anticipate it more being three-sided roof with a cutout in the back of the, the back of those roofs for the units to sit. So again, screened.
Saying the plan ahead.
Yeah.
Thanks. Ben, any comments on?
I noticed the truck turning diagram layout. And in looking at this, there's not much room for delivery trucks for the commercial. There's no, no room in the back of the buildings really, is there? Everything would have to come in and out through the front.
Well, the anticipation is, if I can flip over one more, is really this area on this side here would be a loading area. We don't anticipate this being a large vehicle delivery location. So having the vehicle be able to park here, there's a walk all along the back of this first floor commercial area down on this side of the building to be able to gain access on that side here. The front building would likely end up being alongside in one of the side parking lot as well so that it would, again, they're usually off hours and it would not be blocking a business or residence at that time. But there isn't really a demand for a full loading dock as you would in a larger commercial facility, in this type of facility.
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be smaller stories and things, but it seems pretty inconvenient. But if they're willing to put up with it, I guess it's okay.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, residents come and go at all hours these days. So you gotta make sure the conflict is minimal. Go to you.
My only comment, and I had discussed this with the board actually, was a bus stop would be a really good idea. Possibly right before the roundabout on Salt Point, maybe to the south, possibly.
Or right after.
Or to the north.
Either way, yeah.
Either way. I'm just saying the south because it looks like you might possibly have some restaurants and other things at that, you know.
We couldn't be more. We're gonna reach out to the DPW and see about coordinating with them.
Yeah, okay.
I think the bus goes right through there or rather it was the route through that way, so. Good idea. Rocco, anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is I'm glad to see the connection to the rail trail because that's always a good thing. I noticed that there is no elevators planned, stairs only. I mean, from what I noticed and the plans, am I wrong there?
I believe these are elevator service buildings, although I maybe I misspeak.
Okay, well, maybe.
As far as I'm aware, the four stories are definitely elevators as well.
Because that's not what I saw in the plans. Okay, that's good to hear. The other thing is that I assume you're gonna have some EV charging stations here.
We have 11 EV spaces. They're centrally located right here in the middle.
Okay.
As we have in here, yep. And one of them will be an EV handicap. It's not shown right on this plan, but it is in our plans. But it'll be an EV handicap and obviously that'll adjust a little bit of the landscaping that is shown in here, but that will be the EV parking area.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's it for now. All right, thanks, Rocco. Joe?
Yeah, no questions at this time.
And?
No comments.
The EV charging stations, are they, they're just gonna be like general EV or are they gonna be Tesla?
I don't have that answered just yet, Jeff. I don't know. Or Jacob, who's on as well, might be able to comment on that.
I'm pretty certain they're gonna be the, what we call the level two chargers, which are not the fast chargers.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have multiple options for Tesla and for the other vehicles as well.
All right. My comments, as I said, I agree with Carol on the community garden. I believe the bus stop's good too. You may attract some community college students there from Duchess. Tenants and amenities, I guess my last thing. You did show some green space there next to a couple of the buildings and what, I don't know, if a playground is warranted, if you think it's for children or a bocce court or whatever it might be. You have some experience with amenities over at Eastdale. Our dog park, dog walking park, if those are allowed, we'll see. But to make sure we got something, grills, outdoor grill space maybe. Just throwing out some ideas.
Okay. I move the planning board declare its intent for a lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type one action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved agencies and identified interested agencies.
Second.
Moved and seconded for lead agency. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Move the planning board to defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board, those received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of and allocated to one through 11.
Second. I think it's more like one through 14, maybe?
15.
One through 15, sorry.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jeff, if you want, you can provide six additional answers.
Let's see. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I wanna make sure we heard the approval. All right, thank you all. We hope to see you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, hope to see you in October. That's the, that's our goal, but hopefully we'll.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next up is 86 versus 68 Channingville Road Lot Line Revision. I don't see anyone here, so I assume someone's not represented there. Let's see. Is there someone on for this? I see someone named.
Hopefully.
Someone named Joe.
Joe? You got unmute, Joe. There you go.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks for hanging in there. You're here for the Channingville Road Revision?
Yes, it's my, I'm trying to get a piece of property from my neighbor and merger with mom.
Okay, it sounds pretty straightforward. Do you have anything further to say about that?
Not building any structures, not doing anything besides just trying to just make sure some don't get built behind me. That's all.
Okay, that brings you up closer to the existing zoning as well.
Yeah, that was the other, it gets me closer to the four acre, the zoning requirement.
All right. Kristen, what's the department recommendation?
Very straightforward application. For seeker purposes, lot line revisions are a type two action, so that requires no further environmental review. The applicant provided us with a coastal consistency review form that would define. The comments that are affiliated with the lot line revision review in my recommendation memo are straight out of the lot line revision review chapter of our town code. I just, Joe, I don't know if you're coordinating with John Post. Oh, and he's.
Yeah, John, John's representing me.
Okay, right. So I do just want to make sure that it's very clear that there is a time, I'm sorry, there is a time limit affiliated with your approval this evening. So it'll be a conditional approval. We'll square up all of the details to get you ready for filing with Duchess County Clerk. But there is a deadline and then the deadline, I actually built in the maximum time permitted by our town code. So that's for, you know, you will have until Friday, December 15th to get everything taken care of and filed with the Duchess County Clerk. Most applicants don't like to wait that long, but I have three instances in the past eight months where the applicants have waited till, I have one tomorrow, the day, the deadline day to get everything signed and filed. So anything you can do to just get the paperwork in order well in advance of that would be appreciated.
Yep.
I, I said Friday, December 15th, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we should be able to pull everything together pretty quickly.
Great. So with that, staff is recommending that the board adopt a seeker resolution for a type two action, provide a coastal consistency determination and then adopt a resolution to grant a conditional lot line revision approval with said time extension.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Kristen. Any comments from engineering standpoint?
We had two very minor comments, just to provide deeds and to provide a bulk table. So very simple comments that should be easy to address.
Yeah, no construction or anything going on?
Yep.
No, and I got a lawyer that says that it's all set up to do the deeds. Actually, I'm gonna walk the property on Saturday.
Terrific. All right. Let's go around the board for any comments, anyone?
No, no comments.
No comment, Chris?
No.
And? On the environmental assessment form, page two, question 12, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, an archaeological site or district which is listed on the national or state registered historic places and so forth? The box is not checked off, no or yes. And part B, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological sites in New York State and so on and so forth? Again, not checked off. So before we give our approval or can we condition approval on someone, some knowledgeable person verifying either yes or no to both of those questions?
So a lot line revision is a type two action, so there's no further environmental review. So regardless of whether they are or aren't historical, since we're only moving a line on a piece of paper, it has no bearing that we're not making a negative declaration that there aren't any issues. If there were a future point development to be proposed on that, then we would address it, but it is a type two action.
Okay, so we don't have to check those boxes off?
The applicant technically didn't need to fill out the long form. Yeah, they could have filled out the short form, which would have been sufficient for the board to determine that it was a type two action.
So we may never know.
I can check for you and let you know tomorrow if you like.
I'll check it myself.
Okay.
But they, as he said, he's doing it for a buffer, so he may not do any development back there anyway. But we'll see. All right, thanks Lisa for that comment.
No way to develop it at the moment.
Thank you.
We'll move forward then.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5 C16 and no further environmental review is required.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board determine that the Channingville Road Lot Line Revision for 86 and 68 Channingville Road is consistent with the town of Kipsey's approval, approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved and seconded for LWRP. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a one-time 60-day time extension as permitted by town code of said approval from Monday, October 16th, 2023 forward to Friday, December 15th, 2023, subject to the following, one through eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded for conditional approval. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, Joe, you're good to go to your next step.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks and have a good night. Is there any other business before the board?
One, one minor item. The board may recall back in April, it granted a conditioned approval for Junior's Bar on Manchester Road 55. The board had some fairly extensive discussion regarding the zoning requirement for landscape, you know, preference for landscaping and the board did discuss and approve conditions requiring planters, planters or landscaping within, in front of the building in the right of way but behind the curb, which is part of the DOT right of way. The board also did decide and specifically discussed and wanted to see added land bank to park in addition to the required parking.
Yeah.
Since then, the applicant has been working towards the conditions of approval. The DOT has indicated that the applicant, there is an application process for use of the right of way, but he's been advised, and I've discussed it with the local DOT myself, whether a use and occupancy permit for, they're denying, basically, they're not allowing anything in the right of way other than parking, traffic signs, telephone poles, things like that. So he can apply for it, but he's not gonna get it. So he discussed with me coming up with some alternate landscaping instead of the landscaping and the planters in front out in the DOT right of way. And so he's gonna, he actually did provide kind of a draft, but I'd like to work with him a little bit on it because we, I had also talked with him about maybe you can put some more landscaping on the sides and there's a planter in front. Maybe you can expand that and move the handicap parking space on the side. So if, what I'm hoping is that the board would grant, and then on the land banked parking, that's also in the DOT right of way, which would probably be permitted. But during the meeting, the board was talking, there was a discussion of around 12 spaces and it doesn't look like he's going to be able to get more than about five. So what I'd be looking for from the board tonight is amendment of your previous conditions of approval to, instead of to provide planters and to provide, you know, a significant amount of land banked parking to give staff discretion on the design of the layout of that landscaping and of the land banked parking.
He's dropping from 12 to five?
Correct.
On the land?
It's possible, if I took a look at the plan, it's possible that he might be able to squeeze in another space or two within the existing area since parking is, since the DOT apparently will allow parking in the right of way because in the rights, you know, now you get on Main Street, you can park next to the curb, it's allowed. So there may, we don't know yet.
Flower gets, flower is unsafe though.
Right. Well, the planter box, the concrete planters, they're just not gonna allow it.
The issue with the amount of the land bank parking is that there were guy wires around the and so when they finally looked and mapped, that was all that they thought people could safely turn in and out of. So before the town board last night was a draft land bank parking agreement to cover, you know, the potentially five or spaces, so.
It was adopted.
Okay.
I thought there was a discussion maybe of the billboard coming down when the lease expired also, but.
That's a possibility, but I don't believe the lease expires imminently, so it will be there.
It's a long-term lease, so it's, yeah, so the potential for future parking here, but not, not anytime soon.
I thought I've been that before the board just because we usually, staff usually throws conditions, but at least one of those was an explicit condition that the board added to the other conditions of approval. So I just wanted your feedback on that before moving ahead with it so he can get his plans done.
Yeah, I'd be okay with approving for staff to work with, work on that. Let's, let's see.
I agree.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. I move that we allow for the Junior's application to allow staff to work with him on landscaping and land bank parking.
I think we had a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, thanks, Eric. Anything else before the board?
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone agrees. Happy birthday, Rocco.
Thank you.